I want to welcome everyone to the November sixteenth voting meeting. Before we actually go into our normal agenda, we're gonna have a election of officers, but first, let's do the pledge allegiance to the flag. Everyone, please stand. As board secretary, I'm gonna take roll call. Hunter Ahrens. John Fidler.
Here.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Here.
Dr. David Hemberger.
Here.
Michael Japina.
Here.
Anthony Choudry.
Here.
Uri Miller.
Present.
Michelle Stratton.
Here.
Allison Wilson.
Here.
A present, one absent. Since this item was not on the agenda, we're gonna be electing a new president. Does anyone want to make a comment or public comment on the election of the president only?
I just have a question for Mr. Pike. Is this for a president or pro temp president?
Well, first, we'll elect a pro temp president, and then that person will take care of the election of officers.
So, we're gonna elect the pro temp president first?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Hemberger, this public comment is for both the election of the pro temp and for the election of the temporary president.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak? We'll give a minute for the people in the other room. Okay, there are no one wants to speak. At this time, I'll take nominations for the temporary president.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Japina.
Second.
Any other nominations? I'm a motion to close nominations. So move.
Second.
Second. Let's vote on Mr. Japina as pro temp. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it. Mr. Japina, your meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. It's my honor now to open the floor to nominations for the office of President of the Exeter Township. School Board, do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Stratton.
Second.
We have a nomination of Mrs. Stratton and a second. Are there any other nominees for the board presidency? Seeing none, if there is no other objection, I declare the nominations closed. According to our Board Policy Number 005, states that the election of an officer requires the winning candidate to receive a majority of all the votes cast by those present in voting. Since there are eight members present tonight, five votes are necessary to win if everyone present casts a vote. As to Mrs. Stratton, for the Office of the President of the Exeter Township School Board of Directors, please indicate your vote by raising your hand. And Mr. Pike, I'd like to do a voice vote on that, please.
John Fidler.
Yes.
Dr. Ann Herring.
Yes.
Dr. David Hemberger.
Yes.
Michael Japina.
Yes.
Anthony Choudry.
Yes.
Uri Miller.
Yes.
Michelle Stratton.
Yes.
Allison Wilson.
Yes.
Eight yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Pike. The vote is eight zero in favor of Mrs. Michelle Stratton, and she has become elected as President of the Exeter Township School Board. I will now hand over the seat to Mrs. Stratton, and I will sit in her seat. Congratulations, Michelle.
Welcome to the Tuesday, November sixteenth voting meeting of the Exeter Township Board of School Directors. Tonight's meeting is being livestreamed and recorded. A copy of this meeting will be made available tomorrow, along with highlights from tonight's meeting and answers to any questions that may arise. In addition to the nine board members in attendance this evening, we are also joined at the board table by our solicitor, Sharon Montane, and members of the school district administration, including Dr. Kimberly Minor Superintendent, Dr. Eric Flaham, Director of Teacher Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Dawn Harris, Director of People's Services, Dr. Kristy Howler, Director of Human Resources, and Mr. Brian Pike, who serves as our Director of Finance and Support Services, as well as our Board Secretary. I'd like to mention that the board met in executive session on November fourteenth and prior to this meeting to discuss personnel matters. At this time, we will be starting with night number three on our agenda, and that is amended agenda items. Are there any board members that would like to amend the agenda for this evening? Hearing no additions or changes, we will move on to the following items. Number four, Superintendent's Report, Dr. Kimberly Minor.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. Congratulations on your election to be Board President. I have a few items that I would like to share this evening. First of all, I would like to thank Walmart for their participation. In fact, they're leading our vaccination clinic for children ages five to eleven in the school district. That registration went out through Parent Square, which was introduced at our last meeting formally to the public and launched. It was incredibly successful, and those appointments filled up very, very quickly. And so Walmart has agreed to extend our clinic so that more children can participate. So, again, we thank them for being wonderful community partners with us, and thank Ms. Breton for the successful launch of Parent Square, and Mrs. Harris for her coordination efforts for the vaccinations. I'd also like to talk about a few items pertaining to athletics this evening. First of all, I'd like to share that our football team will play in the District Three semifinals on Friday. They have had an absolutely outstanding season. The game is Friday, November nineteenth at seven P. M. at Cedar Cliff, which is located in Harrisburg. So although that's a bit of a drive, we encourage everyone to go out and support our Eagles as they play for the District Three semifinals. Also, yesterday, I had the privilege personally of getting to meet our new girls wrestling team, and they had the privilege of meeting with Sally Roberts, who was a former elite wrestler, a combat veteran, and the founder and CEO of Wrestle Like a Girl. The young ladies were just wonderful to see, and Sally Roberts did a terrific and inspirational job speaking with them. So we're really excited to launch that. And then finally, right here is our latest award as a district. Exeter Township won the sportsmanship award last night for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year for excellence in sportsmanship. This trophy was given by the Berks County Interscholastic Athletics Association, and it was voted on by the seventeen-member school head varsity coaches. As Superintendent, I am extremely proud of this trophy. Although our sports teams have had an outstanding season and continue to have outstanding seasons, I think in a year that will likely go down in the history books as one where our country and maybe the world as a large struggled with civility and manners and courtesy, that our students rose above all of that. And time and again, at home games and away games, they demonstrated to coaches around the county, athletic directors around the county, that our Exeter students are the best of the best when it comes to sportsmanship. And although every athletic victory is something to celebrate, this one, I think, is particularly meaningful in this year of all years. And I really want to congratulate our coaches and our students who have represented our district in such an outstanding way. We are truly very, very proud of them all. So, thank you, Mrs. Stratton.
Our next agenda item is public comments. We will be following Board Policy Number nine zero three regarding public participation in board meetings. This policy was adopted on March thirty-first, two thousand twenty. I will not be reading this policy this evening, however, please be aware that if you do not comply with our policy, we will unfortunately have to ask you to leave. So I'm gonna be combining the two lists. At this time, we're only taking public comment on agenda items, and I believe that some of the people signed up on the other list, but they actually will be at this time versus at the end of the meeting. So if I am incorrect in calling you up and you are not speaking of something that is on the agenda, just let me know. But judging by your topics, I believe everyone is looking to speak now. The first person will be Mrs. Mary Gardella. There's a delay between people in the other room, so that's why we're waiting in case anyone is wondering. There she is. And actually, just to give a heads up, Mr. Gardella is next. So when you're almost finished, if he wants to start making his way over to save some time, he's welcome to do that.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to ask the board to discuss in full the original safety plan as outlined by Ms. Harris in the August meeting. To make masks optional, as other school districts in our county have done since the stay on the D O H illegal mandate. There's a gym full of kids down the hall, and I wonder if them's wearing masks. Coaches aren't. Kids don't wear masks when they go to the stores, when they go to church, when they go to parties, when they go to sports events, movies. School only. You have kept these kids muzzled like rabid dogs. Cunniness, political opponents for too long. Why is it any wonder that there is learning loss, behavior issues, mental health issues, increased drug use, and bullying in school? This is what you brought about. You are intentionally mentally torturing these kids. They cry when they hear that someone's sick. They get upset, thinking that they're going to die, that they got COVID. It's causing undue stress. This is akin to child abuse, and it has to stop. Thank you.
Next will be Mr. Ted Gardella.
Good evening, Ted Gardella, two one eight Pennsylvania Avenue. While I could not attend the last board meeting in person, I was able to view the recording. And I must say that a few questions about the comprehensive plan were answered and more were introduced. I hope that the new school board members who will be seated sooner and attend or viewing the meeting tonight so that some of the mistakes of the past will not be repeated. I understand that an email with a link to comment on the comprehensive plan was sent out. I assume it only went to active parents. When I looked at the latest link on the website, there was no option to provide commentary. So you did not allow any community members who do not have children currently in the system to provide input. Of course, you've already heard some of my input previously, so to imply that there's been no input on the comprehensive plan ignores public comment at meetings. I listened with great interest to the presentation on the career internship program with its current very small scale. Mr. Ricketts attempted to connect the limited outcomes of this program to the district mission and vision. Very nice feel-good sentiments. But this strategy is supposedly intended to remediate the poor high school graduation rate in Exeter, and there was nothing in this presentation that would show any impact towards that goal. Also, since he informed the board that some students are being paid in these internships, it would appear that Exeter High School is giving credit to some students who have part-time entry-level jobs. This would seem very unfair to those students who also have part-time jobs with businesses that are not part of the internship program. How does this embody the equity that is at the heart of all the district does? Mr. Ricketts did answer one of my questions, how you intend to integrate these credits with the current graduation requirements. His answer is that there will be elective credits. This then requires a follow-up on your part. Do any of you really believe that the lack of elective credits is driving your current very low graduation rate? I still have not heard any questions from this board about the root causes of the low graduation rate. Very simple data point is needed. I've enumerated it several times. What are the required high school courses with the largest student failure rates? In order to have an impact on improving graduation rates, remediating these lost required credits is of the most critical importance. Hopefully, the new board members of this Board of Education will seek real answers to this question, since the administration is elected to ask this board to move the approval of the comprehensive plan down the road. Just because you can do something does not mean that you should. As I listened to the meeting, one theme kept recurring. This board and this administration exerted the absolute minimum effort to seek input from the community. It was apparent during the discussion about quarantining instruction that the onus of communication is placed on the parents. And yet, you heard at the end from one parent who challenged your version of communication about quarantining students. Some of you read sporadic Facebook posts. Hopefully, the next board will commit to real engagement with the community as a whole, both parents and non-parents alike, since we all pay taxes to support the schools. Turning attention to the issue that was supposed to be voted on tonight, the delay of the approval of the comprehensive plan, nothing during the committee of the whole discussion provided any updates on the strategies to improve mathematics achievement. Most of the attention and almost all of the expenditures for materials have been to support the elementary literacy strategy. I was pleased to hear that at least one administrator evidently does read Ed Week. Perhaps the latest article from the November tenth Ed Week update about the low ratings for Convis and Fidel will be shared with the new board members. Finally, I must comment on the reason that was given to delay the approval of the comprehensive plan, that more time is needed to create and implement the professional development components of the plan. If you ask anyone who has been involved in teacher professional development, you will find out that Likert scale questions on the participant reported quality or appropriateness of the PD always returns extremely high scores. But those of us who have been involved in measuring the impact of professional development nationally will tell you that this feedback is almost useless. If professional development does not change instruction, there is no chance it will impact academic outcomes. Measuring the impact of PD on instructional methodology is time-consuming and difficult. I do respect that the superintendent seems committed to classroom observations as one measure of impact. But the true measure of any of these strategies will be the impact on academic achievement as measured by the required accountability assessments in Pennsylvania. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardella. Next is Mr. Tim Morgan.
Good evening. Tim Morgan, forty-seven eighty Farming Ridge Boulevard. I'm here to talk today about eight C, the Health and Safety Plan on the agenda. First of all, I want to thank Mrs. Harris and her staff for all they've done for the Health and Safety Plan. I know that your nursing staff has had quite a lot of work on their hands over the last eighteen to twenty months, and certainly appreciate everything you've done. In listening to the meeting, I just wanted to share my support of your quarantine that you'd spoke about. I do think that it would be a good time to consider ending quarantine and close contact for asymptomatic and non-confirmed positive students. The only thing that I did want to share is that there was a discussion of possibly going to a notification process as opposed to a live phone call. I do think that this is a big step. I think it's a good step in the right direction, and glad to see that we're considering moving forward. However, I do think that the digital platform tends to get varied sometimes. We can get emails at eight o'clock in the morning and not get them until eight o'clock at night, or notifications. I do think that in the interim, at least in the closed period, you know, to follow, if this does get approved, that you should consider live phone calls from the nurses to make parents aware, so this way they can make the appropriate decision for each of their students that they feel is safest for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. All right, I'm gonna apologize in advance. The three that have already spoken are regulars at our meetings, so I'm familiar with their names. So if I do misspeak your name, I apologize. And when you get up, obviously state your name, and then I will know better for next time. So sorry about that. The next person for public comment is Chris Nugent.
Hello, Chris Nugent, twelve Nancy Circle. Mine is a little different from the others. My question to you guys is, how do you define a great coach? It's not as easy as just wins and losses. My definition of a great coach is a person who believes so strongly in his players, in turn, they achieve extraordinary things that they could only dream of before. They are able to bring individuals together to build something even stronger, even greater, a team. I played three sports here at Exeter, and I was all county in two of them. But I was never the best athlete. However, you would be hard-pressed to find another player with desire to succeed that rivaled my own because of my coaches. I remember the sound of Gouldy's voice being like Mickey from Rocky when we needed to move the chains. I still see the intensity of Mo's eyes that provide me the focus I continue to have today. I recall the confidence Jamie Usaidis provided me each time I was in a jam and struggling during a tennis match. And I am forever grateful to Toni Kroll for providing me the opportunity to start a volleyball club here at Exeter when she agreed to coach us. It was, yep, it wasn't Sean Ganner who brought volleyball to Exeter. It was the selflessness of Toni who cared so much about us that she was willing to give up her time so freely. I had great coaches, and I had a special bond with each one. This is what led me to teaching and coaching. I have coached more than half my life at almost every level because I believe so strongly that a coach can positively influence his or her players to not only be better athletes, but to be better people as well. I want my son to have this same opportunity. As a science teacher, I'm seen as a problem solver. So when Exeter needed a boys volleyball coach, I began to think of the characteristics of my coaches and who would be the best fit for a team whose history in Berks County is unmatched. One name came to mind. He's a former Exeter player. He's a coach of year, both at the varsity and college levels, and he coached more than twenty years with multiple seasons in many of them. He taught my son to love volleyball while coaching his team to a top fifty national ranking for a thirteen-year-old team playing fourteen U volleyball. That's pretty amazing. It is his voice my son hears from the sideline with encouragement. It is his voice that propels him higher into the air. It is his voice that motivated Chase to start on your county championship team last year as a freshman. It is his caring and unselfishness that brings players to this program year after year and nurtures their evolution through outside conditioning and training. So I am here to offer you assistance tonight. Since our many parent and player emails to Mr. LaGaff fell on deaf ears of the committee tasked to select the new coach, I find the committee's decision both illogical and perplexing. However, it has nothing to do with the choice they made, but rather the one they didn't. The solution is obvious, but we need your help to do the right thing. Our boys need John Forre as part of their coaching staff. I'm sorry, but it would be arrogant of any five-person committee to feel that they have come to a reasonable decision, knowing the amount of support he has. Remember, it is never wrong to do the right thing, and two wrongs will never make a right, especially here. Please do the right thing tonight for our boys and many more to come by being, by making him part of the staff, by honoring his commitment to this school and program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. Next is Chase Nugent.
Chase Nugent, twelve Nancy Circle. Many people know me as a baseball player. I have played since the age of five. I have played on competitive teams since the age of seven, and continue to play on tournament teams in the summer and the fall. It came as a great surprise to my parents the fall of freshman year. When I told them I would not be playing baseball for the high school, but that I would rather play for the Exeter volleyball team. You may ask why or how I came about this decision. Well, when I was twelve, Coach Forre, who had coached me previously in baseball, asked me to come try out for his new club fourteen U team. I fell in love with volleyball instantly. Our young team would only practice once a week and improve each practice. We learned the basics like serving, passing, hitting, setting, and rotations. When it came time for our first tournament, we faced a true fourteen U team that towered over us. But that did not affect us because we ended up winning that tournament. Size and experience didn't matter. It was the skills and great coaching that allowed us to be successful. Two more seasons followed that were even better than the first one. Many first-place victories against older teams that outsized us. So when it came to make a decision about a spring sport for high school, it was a no-brainer. So when it came to make a decision about a spring sport for high school, it was a no-brainer. I wanted to play for the best volleyball coach around and the best coach I have ever had, Coach Forre. I started my freshman year on the JV team. It was great to have Coach Forre as well as several of my club teammates on the team. The JV team was dominant thanks to Coach Forre's outstanding coaching abilities. About five games into the season, his starting position opened up on the varsity team, and the coach decided that I would be a good fit. You can imagine the pressure I felt as a freshman, but Coach Forre was there for every step of the way. Even though I technically had a different head coach, I knew I had the support from Coach Forre. He was always giving great coaching advice and encouragement. I'm sure my teammates have similar stories about Coach Forre's encouragement and how he has not only helped us become better players, but also better people. I am not sure why Coach Forre was not selected to be our new head coach. He has done nothing but support the boys' and girls' volleyball program. I have not met a single player that does not like or have respect for him. I would love to see him on the sideline this year, because I cannot imagine this volleyball season without Coach Forre. My final comment is, thank you, Coach Forre, for everything you have done for the Exeter volleyball family. Thank you for introducing me to this amazing sport and making me the player I am today, and I truly appreciate everything you have taught and done for me over the years. I hope to see you on the sidelines this year. Thank you.
I apologize I'm not able to read the first name here, but it is a young lady by the name of Ms. Forre.
I'm the daughter of John Forre, and I'm a part of the girls' volleyball team, and I'm speaking in regards to the selection of the coach for Exeter Boys volleyball. Ever since I was as young as four, my dad has created this immense influence on me with volleyball. He would always encourage me to get touches on the ball with the teams he has coached, like Muhlenberg and Penn State Berks. When I got old enough for club, he would train and coach me. He always wanted me to be the best I could be as a player. I've improved season by season because of him, shaping me into the player and person I am today. With all the accolades I've achieved, all-county, all-division, all-state, all-American, and Player of the Year, it wouldn't have happened without him. Without him, I don't even know what other sport I'd play, but I know as of now, I wouldn't love it as much as volleyball. Not only does my dad mean a lot to me, but he means a lot to my brother, who's currently on the boys' volleyball team. My dad loves the volleyball environment as well as the sport. He does this for the kids and no one else, and that's a critical part in why he coaches. Putting a great deal of time in for players and kids to improve with the sport is what he lives for. He even encourages and recruits kids with Keith Eckenrode to go out for volleyball so they can learn a lot of the sport as well. During games and practices, immediate feedback, encouragement, and celebration is said by him. When I'm in a game, I hear that voice in my head and use it as motivation for the next ball. Not only did he cheer on the girls' volleyball team, he put so much time in for them in the offseason by setting up nets outside during the summer and promoting Berks Lee training as well as at-home training to improve their vertical and speed and agility. Any girl on the team could ask him for feedback after games, and he will happily give it to them, because he wants what's best for every single player. My dad has coached and played volleyball for over thirty years, and he can't get away from it because he loves it too much, and I don't blame him. His knowledge and coaching aspects had a positive impact on anyone that has ever played for him. I hope and I'm sure many others hope that he can continue coaching the sport he loves at Exeter. Thank you.
Ms. Forre. Ms. Forre, could you please come back to the microphone? I'm sorry. Just a reminder to everyone that after you state your name, you also have to state your address, and I didn't want to interrupt you when you were speaking, so can you come back and do that just for the record, please?
Do you want me to say my name too? Okay, ten-ten Hartman Road.
Thank you, sorry about that. But a good lesson for everyone else in the room, so thank you very much. Next is Jack Forre.
Hello, my name is Jack Forre of ten-ten Hartman Road, and I'm the son of John Forre, and I'm a part of the boys' volleyball team for Exeter. I believe that there's been a huge mistake in not making John Forre the head coach for our team. He is by far the most qualified volleyball coach in this county, and I know that I'm not the only one who thinks this, and I have my team to back me up on that. My dad has been my coach for as long as I can remember. He never coached for the money. He only coached to watch me and my fellow teammates grow and become the team we are today. My dad wanted us to succeed so much that he took time out of his day to set up nets outside and get us gym time inside to improve our game. We would not have success in our life at volleyball if it wasn't for him, and I owe the world to him for making me the player and student I am today. He is one of those coaches that puts school way before the sport. If I'm ever having trouble in school, I always know who to go to, because he wants me to succeed in life. On the court, I am always learning something new, because he takes the time to explain it to me. If it was in the middle of the game, he would still take that time to help me out. I can't even think about what volleyball would be like without my dad as our coach. He is my role model, and no one in this world could replace that. No matter what the outcome is of tonight, my dad will always have that place in my heart, screams volleyball. I hope you guys make the right decision and do what is right for this community. For the sake of my fellow teammates and parents, I am hoping you understand what he has done for us and over our this school position. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forre. Next is Paige Benny.
I'm Paige Benny, four-twenty-one Range Road. I would like to express my concern that the best eligible candidate for the boys varsity head coach has been overlooked. John Forre's volleyball story started here in Exeter as a varsity player during the mid-nineties. Mr. Forre continued to play in college, and during his senior year, he was the assistant coach for the Muhlenberg Girls and the Reading Boys High School volleyball teams. His dedication for the sport has continued ever since. For the past two decades, Mr. Forre coached at a variety of levels, expanding from twelve U club teams to the college level. His thoroughness and ability to instruct was evident when he was the head coach of the Muhlenberg team, turning a struggling program into a perennial county contender with several district playoff appearances. He also demonstrates the ability to improve players, allowing them to achieve their full potential. Mr. Forre has coached multiple Players of the Year at both high school and college level. He has also been my coach during club volleyball. He has taught me how to become an overall better player and helped me specialize in defense. Coach Forre has made the biggest impact on my volleyball career. He has continuously shown his loyalty to the Exeter School District by coordinating opportunities for our youth players to develop skills outside of the school program as well as within. I am proud to call him my coach. Thank you.
Next is Benjamin Wheel.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Mile, three-eleven eleven. John brought me into the game of volleyball, and I'm not going to lie, at first I hated it. Him pushing me to go and improve made me want to continue improving in the sport and play more and more. His dedication to coaching has made me grow in ways I have no words to describe. John has been a coach at a collegiate level and a head coach at a high school level with tons of success. His drive to always make a team better I've shown throughout the years. I respect this man so much, he's helped me from suns when I needed it, and he will always hold a place in my heart as my coach. There was no other coach in this world that would want to play under. I'm hoping you guys make the right decision. Bye.
Thank you. Next is Keith Eckenrode.
Keith Eckenrode, forty-five oh eight Farming Ridge Boulevard. Just to take a second to step back, the reason we're all here tonight, basically, to kind of set it up after the head coach last year resigned, so. My name is Keith Eckenrode. For the past twenty-four years, I've been either a player, official, or a coach for the boys' and girls' volleyball team. I was a former Division One player, I'm the current vice president of the Berks County Chapter of Volleyball Officials, and the current junior high girls' coach with John, where we turned a mediocre team with potential into a thirteen-and-oh county powerhouse in just one season. John's idea of coaching the girls was not only to bolster the high school girls' program, but as well as recruit more middle-school boys and get ready for their high school season, both of which we were successful in doing. For the past five years, I've been a volunteer coach with these gentlemen behind me, and I watched them grow from seventh-grade newcomers into now three-time defending county champions. The key pieces to their success were the recruitment, training of athletes, the genuine care for kids, and the tireless work ethic shown by John Forre. After the 2020 season was canceled, the boys were understandably disappointed, as we all were, but the following year, I coached our eighteens club team, John coached the fifteens team, and when both teams came together in the 2021 regular season, despite losing six out of seven starters the prior year, we won our third straight county title. This does not happen if John is not involved. On October first, without any transition plan whatsoever, the former head coach resigned, leaving these kids with nowhere to play and no gym to practice in. We're still behind, as we usually start open gyms in the middle of September every year. However, like always, the kids and parents put their faith and trust into John and I. In a matter of two weeks, we filled out the necessary paperwork, jumped through the many hoops that we had to, and we currently have thirteen Exeter varsity athletes signed up to play club volleyball, with many more newcomers committed to play during the regular season. We returned several all-county players, including three of our sophomores, who are arguably the best players at their position in the county, all right, and the sky is the limit for them. Again, none of this offseason training or in-season recruiting happens if John's not involved. With over twenty years of experience running several programs, John has been head coach for high school club and the regular season girls' and boys' teams, along with coaching collegially at Penn State Berks. I'm just very proud of this group behind me, the boys, the girls, the parents, just look at the support that John has behind him. I'm very proud to be a part of both the boys' and girls' team at Exeter Township. I appreciate all the support from the parents and the athletes. I appreciate the opportunity that you've given them to voice their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori Schwank.
Hello, my name is Lori Schwank. I live at forty-five ninety-four Dunham Drive, and I'm a parent of an Exeter female athlete, and I am very concerned in how decisions are made in hiring Exeter coaches. I'm not going to mention any names, but one of you school board members knocked on my door several weeks ago to try to persuade me to vote for a particular candidate running for Exeter Township supervisor. They informed me of what the candidate's credentials were and why they were the strongest candidate, and I told the school board member it sounded like the candidate was well-qualified for the position, but I would do more research on my end before casting my vote, as everyone should before voting. I then asked the school board member if they were aware of the boys' high school volleyball coach opening, and if the school board has any say in who Exeter hires as their coaches, and they replied they were not aware of the opening, but yes, the school board votes on who is hired for coaching positions, but they basically just vote for the candidate the athletic department recommends. This is very concerning to me, since the school board members are the final decision-makers in hiring Exeter coaches. When I heard John Forre applied for the coaching position, I thought it was a done deal, with all of his knowledge, experience, successes, and most importantly, his involvement at Exeter and volleyball. As you heard by many people here tonight, I truly find it hard to believe the individual the athletic department chose is more or even remotely close as qualified as John Forre is. I know many of you school board members have children that go to Exeter or have gone to Exeter, and I am sure if your son was on the boys' volleyball team and they were hoping and praying John Forre to be their coach, plus hearing what everyone here had to say tonight, you would all, or almost all, overturn the athletic department's decision, or at the very least, put the vote on hold, and look at the final two candidates' credentials, and if need be, sit down with both of them before casting her vote. I have faith in all of you, not just as board members, but as parents, that you will base your decision on who you feel is the most qualified candidate. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Our final public comment will be from Ms. Amy Forre.
Hi, I'm Amy Forre, ten-ten Hartman Road. Probably all know that I'm Coach Forre's wife. Just a few things about John, and they said a lot already, but he is selfless, almost selfless to a fault. The day after the last day of the junior high season, the girls were disappointed that the season was over, so what did John do? He popped up a net at Reifson and had all the girls come out and play, because that's what he does. You know, his players from Muhlenberg last summer, he hasn't coached in Muhlenberg for ten years, but they wanted to play, so he popped up a net in Muhlenberg, and we all went over and played. That's the kind of coach he is. A player this year was struggling with diving, and he said, "Come on down to my junior high practice. We'll work on it." He didn't have to do that, but that's the kind of coach he is. I have hundreds of other stories, I could just keep going on and on. He leaves a positive impact on his players, as you can hear and see. He is also fair to a fault. With our daughter in club, I coached alongside him. Our daughter sat more than any other player. Why? Because he had to prove that he was not showing any favoritism at all. So I kept the stats, and the stats you could see, our daughter sat more than every other kid out there. But you did hear her say she was the Player of the Year, so she probably should have been out there more than she was. I just struggle to understand why these boys said they wanted this coach, and nobody seemed to hear what they were saying. He's in good standing. He's still the junior high coach. There are no words to describe the level of disappointment that I feel about this interview process, especially after talking to several of the people that did interview him. One person didn't even know who the previous coach's name was. Thirty-one years as a coach, you think that would have been part of your homework, trying to fill those shoes, it's a little hard to do, and the fact that she didn't even know what his name was. And then she kept telling me that she was new, and she was sorry, she didn't really know a whole lot about it. The other person I spoke to talked about criteria. Criteria. I'm not really sure what criteria there is in an interview like this, but I'm guessing in this specific interview, it had nothing to do with years of experience, the boys' preference, parents' preference, or the level of dedication to Exeter Township. He has more Exeter volleyball shirts in his closet than he has anything else. If he's not wearing blue, he's probably not wearing any color at all. That's all I have to say.
I just would like to take a moment and thank all of you for coming tonight. I would bet that for the majority of you, this is your first time coming to a meeting. Our meetings aren't that exciting, so we appreciate when students show the capability to get up here and speak respectfully and kindly, and to show your love and support for Coach Forre. That means a lot to me as a board member, and I think it means a lot to him as well. And it's no doubt that he's touched a lot of lives, so thank you. Moving on in our agenda, we have the board meeting minutes. If there's no objections, we will adopt the motion to approve the meeting minutes from last month's school board meeting.
So moved.
Hearing no objections, the meeting's, oh, I'm sorry. It's my first time.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Are there any comments or questions? And hearing no objections, the minutes are approved. Moving on to the treasures report. If there is no objection, we will adopt the motion to approve the October 2021 treasure report and payment request dated October twentieth, 2021, through November sixteenth, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Are there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention? Motion carries. Moving on to the education committee, Mr. Fidler.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. The first two items require no board action. They are the enrollment reports and two field trips. and two field trips within a sixty-mile radius. So we'll move on to the first item for which uh there will be board action, and it is a motion on the health and safety plan. It is recommend- recommended that the board of school directors modify the district's health and safety plan as follows. Remove all references to the word guidance and replace with the word mandates.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I I do have a question, probably more for uh administration. Um, a- as we contemplate the uh possible motion, um, I think it would be worth the administration explaining to us what, in what instances a school building would be closed down due to an outbreak. I think we saw a school uh in the School Valley School District, uh, School Valley? Antietam closed today, the entire school. So um, uh, what I'm, fortunately, we haven't had any of that. Our mitigation techniques seem to have been working. Um, so can we please just have a little bit of a discussion on what the threshold is that would require uh the school to take action, close the entire building, uh, under whose guidance would the district be operating? Is it the PDE, Pennsylvania Department of Education, PA DOH, Pennsylvania Department of Health, or some other authority? And what would the length of a closure be? And the corollary to that then is, um, you know, how would we then conduct the education for those student, for those students in that entire building who might find themselves quarantined for a period of time? Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Japina. Uh, I I'll take the second part uh first, and then I'll turn the first part over to Mrs. Harris. So in the event that we needed to close an entire building, um, we would then revert to full virtual instruction, and we would have our teachers uh provide that instruction um just like we did that last school year when we had all students um learning virtually. So that's the second part to the question, and I'll ask Mrs. Harris to address the first part, under what conditions um we may have to close an entire school building.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Uh, so I thi- I think the board remembers that there's no attestation order in place anymore, which was that order that kind of gave us those very strict parameters last year about closing buildings based on case counts. And um back in our August meeting, I think it was our August seventeenth or nineteenth meeting, uh, when I did that presentation for you, we talked a little bit about what uh the DOH and PDE have put out for this year in terms of guidance around closures. So again, no sort of mandate around it, but guidance around when a district might consider doing something like a fourteen-day closure. And so the information that I'm gonna review tonight is the same as it was in August. They have not made any changes since then to that guidance. Um, and essentially, they give a threshold of a twenty-five case threshold for a small school over a fourteen-day period. So our small schools are uh Jacksonwald and uh at this point, Lorraine as well. The threshold for considering a closure for a medium-sized school is a twenty-five to forty-five case threshold over a fourteen-day period, and that's Owatton and uh Reifton. And, sorry, and the junior high. And then the threshold for considering a closure for a large school is forty-five-plus cases over a fourteen-day period. So who decides whether or not a district would close during that time? It's up to the district. So essentially, what the guidance says is that if we find ourselves in a situation where we have that level of case threshold over fourteen days, and we have concern that it is building spread and not necessarily just community spread, that we should contact DOH, talk it through with them, and of course, Dr. Minor would be leading that process and having those conversations. I would join her and get input from our nurses. And then the DOH would, you know, make some recommendations for guidance to Dr. Minor, and Dr. Minor would work to make a decision on that closure.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Thank you, uh, Mrs. Harris. Um, so then um we're, we're going to put the health and safety plan to a vote uh once we're done our conversation here. Uh, assuming that there is an approval to accept the motion, what happens tomorrow relative to the mandates that are in place right now?
Mrs. Harris, may I, may I start? So uh, one of the things that uh we talked about was um two different mandates being high-profile mandates. Uh, the first one was quarantining, and the second one uh was masking. So uh, there's a number of places throughout the health and safety plan where it talks about guidance, so those would all um turn over to mandates, and specifically, um, the quarantine of close contacts would um would stop basically effective uh tomorrow with a board vote um to drop that. We would continue to contact families uh who were close contacts. Um, you know, certainly, we will um take into consideration uh Mr. Morgan's comment about the way that we um do contact those families. Uh, last week, uh, Mrs. Harris explained that exclusions were different for those students who were positive, and so those students would continue to uh be excluded from school because they uh were positive for COVID. I did want to address the question of about masking before Mrs. Harris spoke because just during the course of this meeting, um, I've received um communication about where masking stands in the state of Pennsylvania. So just today, the Commonwealth Court has issued an order and opinion granting the motion of the plaintiffs in the mask appeal case to end the stay. The court orders that the automatic stay will end on December fourth, absent an action by the Supreme Court to proceed um on December fourth. So when we spoke at the committee of the whole meeting, we talked about the mask order expiring uh from the state on January the seventeenth, because there was um, you know, litigation pending regarding that, and it appears as though unless the Supreme Court takes action, that might actually happen on December fourth instead of in January, which would be prior to our next meeting of the board. When Mrs. Harris and I were going through uh the health and safety plan, um, and uh, you know, looking at what had happened with um previous motions and mandates, um, you know, it was brought to our attention that prior to the mask mandate, our board had taken action to require masks, and that as part of that action, our board had um indicated that that would only be lifted through a vote of the board. So although uh if the board were to remove uh the word guidance tonight and and only have the board mandate, that would end quarantines, but it would require a separate vote of the board to end uh masking requirements, since the board actually uh had a motion with a specific requirement that it would take board action to lift that motion prior to the um state mandate. And I just wanted to call that specifically to your attention because, again, this information just literally came to me during the course of the meeting about the Commonwealth Court um and then, and that potent, you know, potentially taking effect on December fourth. So I just wanted to make sure the board had that uh full and most recent information. I don't know if there's anything else that Mrs. Harris wanted to add to Mr. Japina's original question.
No, I did want to make mention, as I said, when I was looking back at the August presentation and that whole meeting, that we made that um board motion to to end only with a board uh vote, so you covered it. Thank you.
May I ask one more question? Um, for those that would uh are currently on quarantine, if the board again supports the motion this evening, would they be eligible to come off quarantine immediately?
If the board wishes, yes. Uh, a couple more things I just wanted to share uh with the board. I, you know, shared last week that over ninety percent of our students remain negative uh throughout quarantine. That exact number is ninety-four percent, so that's uh, we quarantined seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven students so far this year. Um, so that means seven-hundred-and-forty-seven of those students remained negative throughout our quarantine. I also mentioned last week that I had the opportunity to talk to a few of our school nurses to get a sense of what their thoughts were on continuing to impose quarantines. I had the opportunity to speak to the rest of them, and I just wanted to share with you their input as well. Um, they are comfortable with moving to a self-quarantining model, meaning that parents have the choice whether or not to quarantine. I asked them what our hotspots were. So those students that did turn positive were a lot of them in class exposures, were a lot of them lunch exposures, et cetera. And they were pretty e- easily able to identify that the two hotspots that we have, which is the same across almost every district, is household positives, which makes sense, because you're living in the same house and you're having a lot of exposure over and over and over again, unless you're finding a way to isolate. And then lunch exposures was the other hotspot. So those kiddos that were coming back positive while they were quarantining, the majority of them are from household positives and lunch exposures. So I just wanted to make sure that you had that information as well as you're kind of discussing this and trying to make some decisions about moving forward.
Mrs. Harris, you talked about um for building closures, about uh building spread versus uh community spread. Can you tell me how you make that judgment?
It's very challenging to make that judgment. It's, I think it's been one of the challenges all along. Um, you know, I mentioned last week, it's this idea that we are quarantining in school, but then students leave school at the end of the day, and they go on, and they have their lives, and they are not wearing masks when they're having sleepovers with friends and birthday parties and all the, you know, participating in just general outside activities. So it does make it very difficult to kind of identify what's community spread versus building spread. There are some obvious um sort of indicators to us if it would be building spread. For example, if we have one classroom that has a tremendous number of cases all at one time. I couldn't completely rule out that that wasn't a birthday party, but, you know, it would be, it would be of concern to us that it would be one particular classroom that had all of those cases. So, you know, it is a little bit of a judgment call, and there are a lot of factors involved. And incidence rates are higher right now. Uh, they have increased. I was uh busy jotting down some of the countywide incidence uh rates while you were um working on uh board governance, and um, we are at, let me see, three-thirty-point-nine-six. Remember, anything over one hundred is high. It's the highest sort of category. Uh, Wilson area is at two-ninety-eight. I just picked some random schools. Conrad Wisers at three-seventy-seven. Twin Valley's at two-eighty-seven. Um, Ole's at two-eighty-five, Hamburg three-forty-one. So, I mean, it's, it's pretty consistent across the county that incidence rates have gone up. Um, again, that's, that is community spread. So I don't know if that answers your question or not. It's not a, it's not a straight answer, but that's because there, there that isn't necessarily one.
Yeah, no, it is tough. Um, my other thought was uh there's increased numbers in uh Europe and the northwest.
Yes, yes.
How are you tracking that? Uh, what, how are you using those numbers to make decisions?
So we're not necessarily, I only know that, uh, honestly, because I, my husband and I travel a lot, and this weekend, we were looking at uh planning a summer trip, and we were looking at some of the incidence rates um in Europe. Um, so we're not necessarily looking at that as a factor of what we're doing right here locally. We have been looking more at the Berks County incidence rates and the local rates and looking at what's happening in the communities around us.
Do you think that trend will hit us?
Boy, oh boy, I wish I, wish I had that, you know, magic ball to be able to say.
Well, according to uh, you know, some of the past data, uh, that's possibly the case, right?
Yeah, it's, uh, I, one of the things I've learned uh during this pandemic is that any of those things are possible. And it, and it is possible too that you will have a slight increase in cases if you choose to, you know, go the route of not quarantining, but the data is showing that with people being vaccinated, that even if they are getting COVID, they're having lesser, less severe symptoms as a result of being vaccinated. I was just reading today, I may, I hope I get the name right, it is Plaxivid. Um, Pfizer approved, um, got emergency approval for their COVID pill. Um, and they are saying it is cutting hospitalizations and deaths by ninety percent, so that's a huge, you know, milestone and a huge, um, you know, progression in in how we're handling COVID as well.
I have a couple of questions, and I ask them in the spirit uh that I addressed my students. I used to tell them, uh, when they said, "This is a really dumb question, Mr. Fidler," I'd say, "Well, there are no dumb questions, so." I asked your forbearance. Uh, this is a pretty uh heady issue to uh surround a about a thirty-word motion. Um, I think to you, Dr. Minor, you use the word exclusion, I think. Can you differentiate uh between exclusion and quarantine?
I can. I mean, this is Mrs. Harris's ar- areas expertise, so if I misspeak, Mrs. Harris, please correct me, but so exclusion is when we know that a student or a staff member has COVID. They've had a positive test result, and they are not permitted to return to school. A quarantine refers to students who have been exposed to a positive, either at home or in school, but they are not themselves positive. And so that's what the difference between a quarantine and exclusion. So exclusions would continue. If a staff or a student was, in fact, positive, they would not be permitted to come to school.
May I just add?
Please do, yes.
That's all correct. May I just add to that, that we uh also exclude when people are symptomatic as well? So that means if they have a number of COVID symptoms, our nurses would exclude them the same way that they would exclude a student who has a positive test. And then it's up to the family whether they go and and get tested or not, but that exclusion period occurs. And that's, again, separate from quarantine.
Thank you. My, my second question falls more into the spirit uh of my earlier point. And it's very similar to Mr. Japina's question. And I wonder if either one of you could, could finish this. Often when we go to the polls and they're asked to vote on a referendum, there'll be a little description under the text of the referendum. A yes vote means that, blank, a no vote in referendum means, blank. So could someone help me understand what is the effect of an approval or a yes vote for this motion? And similarly, what is the effect of a no vote?
I'd, I'd be happy to do that, Mr. Fidler. Um, so a yes vote for the motion as written, the effect would be that our health and safety plan, everywhere that it refers to, that the district will follow the guidance of the Department of Health, that would be changed to just say the mandates of the Department of Health. Currently, there are two mandates, really. Um, uh, excuse me, there's a, a man, one mandate, which is masking, right, which now may not be a mandate as of December fourth. So effectively, that would end quarantines, and um that, that's the biggest impact. I think a lot of the other things that are in our health and safety plan, washing your hands and, you know, doing all those things, would, would simply continue. So the, you know, if a yes vote would end quarantines basically tomorrow. Um, and then the board, if it would vote separately to end masking, then that also um, you know, could take place. But for right now, the only thing that a yes vote would mean would be that there would be no more quarantines. Um, there would continue to be exclusions. Does that clear?
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. So I did, uh, I don't think I was the only one who raised the question, but did the, has there been a meeting of the pandemic task force since we last discussed this a week ago?
No, there has not. Um, it, it seemed to be the indication that um, you know, that, that wasn't necessary in terms of them providing any additional um particularly helpful information regarding this. Mrs. Harris um did meet with her, her team of nurses, so the pandemic task force has not been.
Thank you very much.
So we're having two votes today or one? I'm trying to get that clarified.
There's only, there's only one motion on the agenda.
And that's the, okay.
That, that's correct. I simply, because of the timing of this Commonwealth Court decision being during the meeting and it happening on December fourth prior to the next meeting, I just wanted to make the board aware of that, but it's a single motion about going with guidance. It would only impact quarantines because the board had made a previous motion that indicated that masking would only end by a board vote.
Gotcha. All right, so it'll be left for the new team, in fact, if they wanted to continue or?
Presumably, yes.
Gotcha. Good luck, guys.
I have a question, um, and it's actually one that came from the community that I thought was very um thoughtful. Um, so thankfully, since our last workshop meeting, um, people from the community have had the opportunity to send us questions, and they have in a very respectful way, which I appreciate. And one of the questions that someone asked that, um, if you could just kind of reiterate this for everyone, was if you chose to quarantine your student, would those days absent be excused?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Harris. And that is a, a great question. A lot of parents have been concerned about how absences would be coded. So if, if there was, you know, substantiated reason that you were quarantining your child, they had a household positive, you had come in contact with a student at school, the nurse would approve that as an excused absence for the entire period of the quarantine, even if it was a voluntary quarantine. So they would be excused absences.
Here is my, one of my favorite questions. Do we have any sense of what the other seventeen districts are doing along these lines?
So again, Mrs. Harris did speak with a number of her colleagues and, and she shared that last week during the committee of the whole. And she indicated at that time that not everybody is as clear about what they're doing as we are trying to be. I would ask Mrs. Harris if she has had any updates since that committee of the whole meeting regarding what the other districts are doing.
No, just questions about what we've decided. And just to recap from last week, because we talked about a lot around this topic last week. Just to recap, there are districts in the county who are no longer quarantining. They're allowing that option to self-quarantine if families want to do so. There are districts in the county who, in their response, said, we're following the exact guidance as written through DOH, which is what Exeter has been doing. And then there have been districts that have said, well, we're following the guidance. And then in follow-up conversations would say, but maybe we're not focusing on this part so much anymore. Maybe we're doing this a little bit differently. But consistent in all of those communications and conversations was the question of, what are you guys going to do? And, and that general sense from everyone that everyone is looking at this topic, trying to make decisions about this topic. And having that general feeling that at some point, you know, we're going to have to look at COVID in a different way. As a community, it's something that we're going to have to deal with on an ongoing basis and how are we going to evolve our practices to be able to do that? So that's kind of a recap from, from last week.
Yeah, I do remember the discussion. I just was curious to know if anything happened since.
No updates, just curiosity.
But what you mentioned, some of the statistics, I'm, I'm always following the test positivity, which is sadly still in two digits, double digits here in Berks County.
It is, I believe it's in the thirties for Exeter in particular, for our, in our mainline mom.
I think for the county, I know the New York Times has a dashboard. For the county, it's eleven percent.
Yeah.
Which, as you know, suggests that the cases are being severely undercounted.
Yes, yes, correct.
Such a high positivity.
You're correct, correct.
Okay. All right. Are there board questions?
Yeah, yes, if I may. Excuse my ignorance about this. I just want some clarity on it. Tonight, can a motion be made to change the mask mandate? Or does it have to wait until December seventh meeting?
Well, you would have to have, there's a couple of pieces to that. One, you would have to have a motion to amend the agenda and see if that was approved. Then you could have a motion to, to whatever motion you wanted to make about the masks. I would say that, that there will be, in all likelihood, another appeal so that we don't know that that December fourth date is fixed in stone one way or the other. So I, I don't know that you need to time any motion to your next meeting. I hate to say it, but, but we really won't know. I mean, it's sort of a day-to-day thing as to what the status of the law and the masks are right now. But in answer to your specific question, you could make a motion if everybody approves amending the agenda.
Mrs. Montane, would that then require a public comment prior to that?
Yes, it would.
When would that motion be made? When would I make that motion?
Well, with the, I guess if you, you could ask if Mr. Fiddler, as the committee chair, if you could make it then or you could make it under new business.
Mr. Fiddler, what would your preference be?
Well, I've never encountered this before, but I mean, I don't, certainly don't see any reason why we couldn't. But we'd have to go through the procedure that, that you outlined, Sharon, so.
So if, if Mr. Fiddler wants to allow a, a second motion, what I would suggest is we have a motion on the table, so let's get through that. If Mr. Fiddler wants to allow another motion, then with his permission, we can go through the exercise of amending the agenda. Right now, you should finish your, your open motion.
I like that idea.
Someone said that Antietam School closed. Mrs. Harris, do you know if they were following quarantine guidelines or not?
I don't, I did not speak with Antietam. Not sure. And I don't, I don't, also don't know how many cases they had that made them make that decision.
I think they had fourteen in fourteen days.
There you go.
Dr. Minor, I just, I just have one final question. Assuming that, let's assume that Commonwealth Court's ruling holds and December fourth comes and the mask mandate is lifted. Do we still have in our health and safety plan, as ordered by the, the school board, you know, right prior, prior to the governor's mandate? Do we still have a provision in there that requires masking? And so it wouldn't be an automatic relief of the mask requirement on December fourth? It would take another board action to, 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 for that to take effect? Is that correct?
That is correct.
My question is, let's say arbitrarily that we just go ahead and we do the vote right now. Will it really affect anything tomorrow on the mask mandate? Are we going to just say stop? Or we still have to follow until December fourth? Either way.
So yeah, right now, the vote that's open would impact quarantines only tomorrow.
But I'm talking about if she seconds the, right?
Yes, if there was a second motion made and we went through the entire process and the board then voted to lift their requirement for masks and the Commonwealth Court held on December fourth, then on December fourth, we would no longer require masks. Or the Commonwealth Court doesn't hold and the fact that the order itself was going to be lifted on January seventeenth, then masks wouldn't be required automatically on January seventeenth. So if, if there was a second motion made by Dr. Herring about the board lifting its own mandate for masks, that would mean then that we would have no masks as soon as the state lifted their mandate, whether that be December fourth or January seventeenth. Regardless, at that point, it would, it would, we would just be waiting on the state.
So the, the district can't overrule the state?
I shook my head, but for the minutes, I will answer, no.
Thank you.
Ron, there's a request, we call the question.
All in favor for the health and safety plan as listed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Do we do this other motion now or do, do we proceed with the last item on my agenda or?
It's really up to you.
Well, why don't we go ahead if, if we could? And do you mind if we go ahead and finish the education agenda? We have a consent agenda with four items, including a trip, a field trip for the music group. And I did receive a notification today that there's a slight change. A miscalculation was made for the amount that the students would have to pay. The original information was six hundred and twenty-five dollars. That amount is now seven hundred and forty dollars. And there will also be a thirty, thirty-seven dollar and fifty cent insurance policy that the district will ask parents to take out before the trip. Otherwise, the, the information is correct as written. So I guess. So the motion would be, as recommended, that the board of school directors approve the following education committee items, all four of those items. Appointment of Heather McCool and Yuki Morgan as business community representatives and Jen Lubis as parent representative to the professional development committee, a settlement agreement and release between the parents individually on their own behalf and on behalf of their minor child. Student number seven, three, four, two, one, two, two, as proposed and further authorizes the board president and board secretary to execute the settlement agreement and release on behalf of the district. Following field trips beyond the Sixty Mount radius. That's the, the music association's trip to Virginia for the Virginia International Music Festival and a list of staff conferences. So that's the motion.
Second?
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Ken, you explain what the business community representatives do?
Certainly. The professional development committee, that was discussed at the last meeting by Dr. Flamm as part of the comprehensive plan. The state requires us to have business representatives that are community businesses as well as parent representatives. And those individuals have to actually be appointed by the board. So Dr. Flamm has reached out to those individuals. They have agreed to participate and the board is simply being asked to, in fact, approve their appointment to that committee. And then they would participate in the meetings and the discussion moving forward.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
You need a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was supposed to say, is there any discussion first? Apologize, all right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Now you can make a motion.
Bear with me, I've never done this before. I would like to make a motion to modify the district's health and safety plan to lift the mask mandate. Do I need to be more specific than that?
I, I, I would prefer if you specify that you're lifting the school board's requirement for the mask mandate, but that we will abide by the state's requirement for however long that exists. Just to be clear that you're not trying to override the state any motion. Yes, please, and perhaps add the phrase at the end that says, however, we will continue to follow the state's mandate. And until such time as it is lifted, yeah, that would be great, thank you. We need a second? The only person that can amend the motion is the person making the motion. We can, in discussion, if there's a second, then you can have discussion and it, and if, if you would choose to amend it, you can do that.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to offer an amendment to that motion. My primary concern and one of the reasons that I was involved in the motion in August was simply to perhaps wait out the approval of the vaccine for five to eleven-year-olds. That vaccine was approved in early November. And for those who are interested in getting it, they have started to get it already. Given the time that you get your vaccine, till the lag time till you get your second vaccine, I would respectfully ask that the board at least keep its mandate in place till December fifteenth, which at that time, anybody who was going to get the vaccine should have had the vaccine and will start to get protection from the vaccine by December fifteenth. That would be a full month prior to Governor Wolf's current mandate, which is sitting before the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. But it would be eleven days after the current Commonwealth Court decision that just came out this afternoon.
I agree with Mr. Japina. I think we need to give some people more time to get the vaccine if they want it, if there was to do so. If they, just to make them feel a little bit more safer with that situation. But in that, in that form as well, you know, realize that the new board will be in place at that time and they will be able to make their decisions because they will start on December the sixth or seventh, I believe. The seventh, so they will, you know, if it goes any further than that, they'll have their, their capabilities of doing, of changing whatever they need to change.
Could I just clarify that parents will still have a choice to send their kids to school with masks?
Absolutely. Parents may continue to send their children to school with masks.
I feel a need to present this because, one, I'm for choice above all. But I go to the football games and I watch our kids in the blue crew section, which is awesome because they represent. They're next to each other. There's no space, there's no masks. And we don't, and, and it's got to be at least forty, fifty kids in that stand, if not more, I could be wrong. And we don't see a surge after that, that I know of. I could be wrong. Have we seen a cer, no, we haven't seen a surge after that. And we are living our lives, if we choose, outside of school to not wear our masks. And then we could just, at this point, I feel it's time to move on and to, again, allow people to make that choice if they choose to or not. I'm rambling. But that's the reason why I wanted to make this, this amendment. I do thoroughly respect those that are choosing to vaccinate their kids and I do want them, and I do hear that they want to have their kids have an opportunity to fully vaccinate. So I do agree with Mr. Japina and I support making that amendment, however you tell me to do that.
Well, first of all, you're not voting because we have to have a public comment on it too, but let's get to the right motion that you actually want to land on. Okay, so you can, you can withdraw your motion and then restate it. Just withdraw it, just saying, okay, I'm withdrawing my motion and I'm going to put out a new motion that will have to be seconded.
You're going to have to walk me through all that verbiage from before. Okay, I'd like to.
Withdraw the motion.
Withdraw my motion. And make a new motion. That we modify the district's health and safety plan to lift the mask mandate.
Board's mask mandate.
Board's mask mandate. But please help me with that one.
On, on December the fifteenth?
On December the fifteenth.
However, we will continue to enforce the state's mask mandate until it is lifted.
Until it's lifted, thank you.
Now, we need a second for that.
Second.
Yes, we need a public comment and if there's any more comment.
Is there any more discussion from the board before I open up public comment?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to add, I, I work in healthcare. I have been involved in COVID since late February of twenty twenty. I think that the community has been amazing in how it has responded. We've had some tough times on the board. But the community's had some tough times too in terms of how the, how COVID has upended us. The, the, the end is, is near, but it's only switching from a pandemic to an endemic, so we'll have to deal with this. And I think a lot of us have learned mitigation efforts. I do believe that it's, that, that we find ourselves in a, in a good position. We have both pharmaceutical, non-pharmaceutical ways to mitigate the impact of COVID. And I appreciate the for. And I appreciate the forbearance of the board and just hearing me out. I couldn't have been in the middle of two hotter businesses in the last year and a half, being education and healthcare. So I do bring it a slightly different perspective. I can tell you that we are seeing a significant upturn in inpatient admissions at Penn State Health relative to this. So all I would ask is that as people do start to resume conducting their lives in the way that they want to, that they just be mindful of how they're doing that. Nobody's afraid to do, nobody should be calling anybody a name or, or calling somebody out if they do something one way or the other. But I do appreciate the effort, I mostly appreciate as well the students who have, it's been tough, I get it. You know, your life hasn't been normal over the last year and a half. You guys have done swimmingly, you've done a great job. I appreciate what the teachers have done and what the administration has gone through, what the community has gone through. And hopefully there is light at the end of the tunnel and I am thankful to Dr. Hearing. She and I are on a very, school board's never supposed to be political. She and I represent very different parties, but I appreciate that she was able to see my perspective and I was able to see hers. Thank you, Dr. Hearing, I appreciate that.
Mr. Stratton, I just have a comment, you know, in regard to mainly the timing of this. You know, there are a couple of reasons for that. One is obviously we're not sure exactly where this, you know, COVID, the status of COVID is going to go. Right now, we're hearing about upticks and we're hearing about increases in, in cases and that's a little concerning. So we're making a pretty definitive declaration or proposal, you know, based upon maybe some indication that this is heading in a different direction than we hope. Uh, the other thing is that, you know, I also think it's a little premature to make this decision because we have a new board coming in. Four new school board members who will be with us in December. And actually, you know, I think they may even have their first, first voting meeting prior to, you know, the fifteenth, if I'm not mistaken. So, you know, to me, it makes a little more sense to, you know, allow this to play out a little bit longer, to see what happens with Commonwealth Court. And, um, and then allow the incoming board and the remainder, remaining board members to make that determination, you know, in December. So that's, so I'll, I'll be voting against the, uh, the proposed motion.
I was just gonna echo what Dr. Hamburg were saying, uh, we just heard that school district next to us closed its schools. There's uptick in cases, I'm not sure if we should be heading down that road right now.
To Dr. Minor and Mrs. Harris, if God forbid, things take a turn for the worse. We still have the ability to pivot and take corrective and protective actions, whatever, however we vote tonight, correct?
Uh, that's correct, so the, uh, the board that's reconstituted after December seventh can always make a motion to amend our health and safety plan and to re-require masks, to re-require quarantines. At this time, you know, the state allows school boards to do that. I don't know if they always will allow school boards to do that, but right now, yeah, they do do that.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we will open it up to public comment. If you could just state your name and your address if you would like to speak at this time.
Hi, this is Eva Ross, I'm at four, 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 zero, Kelly Lane. Mr. Japina, I'm directly my comment directed to you because you were the one that made the motion at ten forty-five at night while everybody went home at the last meeting to mandate the masks. I want you to understand that throughout this thing, you guys as a board have made decisions that have affected families. To give people the choice to get their children vaccinated, vaccines were made available for children five to eleven. Mrs. Superintendent Minor has made it, you know, her goal to get Walmart to, you know, give the vaccines much more frequently so that children can get vaccinated. All I'm asking is for a choice for my son to go to school without a mask because he comes home every day with nosebleeds because he has to wear a mask at school. And I cannot get a medical exemption for that nosebleed because then other children are making fun of him for being the only one that does not wear a mask. So I want you to consider all sides of this, you know, debate that you are having over here. And realize that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania said it's not, it cannot be mandated. And they are lifting the mandate that, you know, was put in Pennsylvania by Governor Wolf. And every one of you live so in fear of this virus where we have the vaccine. Pfizer came out with FDA approval for a pill that you go take for five days and then you're fine after it, ninety-five percent efficacy. And we cannot lift the mandate for masks? Leave it up to the state, if the state decides that on December fourth, that is not what the state wants to do, then the state will impose a mandate, which we will follow through the guidance that we have in our plan. What makes us so much, or this board, so much more superior than the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania? And why are we so worried about everybody else but not giving parents the choice to send their children with a mask or without a mask? They have a choice to vaccinate, somebody should have the choice not to wear a mask at school. Thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else that would like to be heard at this time? Alright, we're gonna go forth with the vote. And Mr. Feig, I'm gonna ask if you could do a roll call for this, please?
John Fidler?
Yes.
Dr. Ann Herring?
Yes.
Dr. David Hamburger?
No.
Michael Japina? Anthony Chowdhury?
Nope.
Fury Miller?
Yes.
Michelle Stratton?
No.
Allison Wilson?
Yes.
Five yes, three no, motion passes.
Okay, moving on to the Personnel Committee, Mr. Japina.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. It's recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following items. Number one, resignations. Number two, retirements. Number three, appointments. Number four, change of status. Number five, leaves of absence. And number six, the list of course requests. Second?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, the Finance Facilities and Audit Commission is, uh, committee, I'm sorry, is Mr. Aaron's who is not here this evening?
Mrs. Stratton, can I just say something quickly? I just want to thank Dr. Heller because I know that she sent the letter out about how we are having such a hard time getting substitute teachers. And we have a long list here of guest teachers that I guess that contacted her after she sent that letter out. So thank you for doing that and thank you for all of the people on this list who have signed up to be a guest teacher and to help us out this year. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson, and I just want to say thank you to our community. That was actually Dr. Meyer's idea and it was a great idea and I was glad that I could help support that. Uh, but it just goes to show that we have an amazing, uh, community here in Exeter.
Thank you. And moving forward to the Finance Facilities and Audit Commission, I'm sorry, committee. It is recommended that the Board of School Directors approves the following Finance Facilities and Audit Items, number one and number two.
Second?
Any discussion?
So this will allow us to go with the Portnoy Law Associates Group as part of, okay, got you, so let me make sure.
Yes.
Will that be enacted immediately, they're gonna start?
It would be for this year's delinquent, so it would start January first. Delinquency starts or ends December thirty-first, or considered delinquent January first, so yes.
Of two thousand twenty-one?
Twenty-two, but it's two thousand twenty-one taxes.
Gotcha.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item number eleven, Policy Committee, Dr. Hamburger.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors approve the, uh, three policy revisions on the agenda for first reading.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Uh, next we will go on to our committee reports, Athletics and Extracurricular Activity Committee, Dr. Hearing.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. The school board received a letter from Four Diamonds at Penn State Children's Hospital that Dr. Minor would like me to share with the board and our community. It says, "On behalf of Four Diamonds staff, care providers, and the families we serve, thank you for supporting Minithon at Exeter Township Senior High. The nineteen thousand eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents your school raised will fund lifesaving research and world-class care for kids and families fighting childhood cancer. Cancer doesn't stop during a pandemic and this year, your fundraising efforts continue to accelerate our work to conduct clinical trials that lead to new treatments and drugs. Offer treatment and hope to patients whose disease is not responding to standard therapies. Foster collaboration with doctors and scientists around the world. Purchase essential research equipment and train the next generations of researchers." So congratulations to our Minithon. Next, I'd like to give Owattan Creek a shout out. The students participated in a Got Candy campaign in which, schoolwide, the students donated six hundred and forty-four pounds of their very own Halloween candy. Twenty-six boxes were sent to Opportunity House in Seaford. I want to thank the teachers that thought of this program. And through this program, teach our kids compassion, selflessness, and empathy, and reminds me why I'm here. Also, I want to thank Ms. Gajaski, sorry if I mispronounced that, for an amazing National Honor Society induction this past Saturday. It was a wonderful ceremony and I was very proud of all the kids that went through that. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hearing. The Exeter Community Education Foundation, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Michelle. ECF Executive Committee met to discuss upcoming projects. It was decided to hold off on funding new projects until several outstanding projects with the district are scheduled or completed. These include NASA emissions at Owattan Creek in Lorraine. K four Arthur visits for buildings, uh, for each building. Thirty thousand in EITC designed funds for K six maker spaces. Our art board at entrance of high school are installed. Uh, Owattan Creek Balance Beam Gilmore Hinni Grant and the employee giving Google forms with, can distribute to staff. Amy Lutz and Angie Cook have been working with Dr. Flamm, this guy right here. And finalize and complete the above-mentioned projects. ECF thanks Dr. Flamm for his effort and support. We continue to focus our efforts on raising money to student outreach and helping students in need. The amount request, amount request for students in need has significantly increased over the last few weeks. ECF Exeter Care Student Outreach has distributed roughly a thousand dollars in support over the last thirty days. We are proud of our students and community, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Brooks Career and Technology Center Joint Operating Committee, Mr. Fidler.
Thank you, Mrs. Stratton. I'd like to, uh, report some really good news about the culinary program. We continue to have delicious meals served by the students. Uh, but those students are primarily first and second level. Uh, you may wonder, well, why aren't the third level students helping to serve and prepare meals? It's because those third level students are already working in restaurants. And so as kind of a piggyback to Mark Ricketts and, and the intern program, our students who go to BCTC, if they're in the culinary program, many of them are already working if they're, if they're at level three. And so I think it's, um, it's, it's a feather in all of our caps that we here at Exeter, in this instance, through the BCTC, are providing a superior education that is resulting in, in jobs. So we have kids getting ready to go to college, we have kids getting ready to go into the military, we have kids getting ready to start their own businesses, we have kids going into the internship program, we have kids going to BCTC. And maybe we have kids who are gonna take a year off and find themselves and then, and then do something wonderful. But it's just another way that this, this district is, uh, supporting our kids with whatever they want to do and gets to the heart of our equity program. Everybody deserves the excellent education here in Exeter, so I just wanted to report on that.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. Brooks County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors, Dr. Hamburger.
Mrs. Stratton, the BCIU Board of Directors has a meeting scheduled for this Thursday, uh, November eighteenth at seven P M. Uh, also, the last, um, meeting, uh, I won't report on that, but I did send out to the board uh, the, um, information about the legislative report as well as, you know, the, uh, the update in terms of what happened, what's happened at BCIU and other documents for your review, so I won't go into that. If I can move on to Legislative Liaison Report. Dr. Dr. Minor mentioned the COLA meeting, the Committee on Legislative Action that we had last Tuesday morning. And, um, this, this group meets quarterly throughout the year. And the purpose is really to kind of promote and advocate for public education and to kind of familiarize uh, school district officials as well as school board members, uh, in regard to what's happening at the, at the state and federal level. And this, this featured speaker was, uh, Dr. Mark Dorocco. And he's the PASA Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Association on, uh, PASA Supervisor, Supervisor and Administrators, is that what?
I, I, it's the State Superintendent's.
Yeah, yeah. So he, I mean, it was interesting, uh, just to kind of, I did send the board a, a lot of information that, you know, from that meeting. You know, his notes, his PowerPoint. He went into a lot of detail in regard to his interpretation of some of the interesting census data and its impact on school districts. He provided a, a white paper that I sent to folks in regard to cyber charter schools. And I've spoken, you know, about this topic many times, um, you know, to the board in regard to how important it is that school districts really recognize, you know, the very devastating impact that, you know, cyber school, uh, funding and, and the, and the, really a broken funding process for cyber charters is having on school districts, their budgets, and the impact on the taxpayer. The recommendations were, uh, consistent, you know, from PASA as they are from other organizations. Or they recommend a flat funding rate for cyber charters, a three-tiered special education tuition rate system, a cap on tuition increases and, uh, and, and a unique recommendation, which is the reinstatement of the thirty percent reimbursement from the, from the state for school districts for tuition, which used to be in place at one time, but has been, uh, removed. So it would be a, a big relief of a burden if the state would be willing to kind of reinstate the, the thirty percent tuition reimbursement for, um, charters. Also, I think, uh, some of the other things, um, that were important in the first, in the presentation had to do with, again, the personnel shortage. And Dr. Minor mentioned last week about how ten years ago, Pennsylvania was turning out about forty thousand new teachers per year through their teacher education programs, and now we're down to about fourteen thousand. So obviously you can see when we're talking about shortages and, and problems with substitutes, that this is a big part of what's happening right now. We have to try to do a, a better job of encouraging students to go into public education as a career. Because, uh, we've really just gone, uh, really taken a turn here in Pennsylvania.
Excuse me, Dr. Hamburger, on that, on that particular issue, maybe it's Dr. Minor as well. Is the shortage across all types of educational environments and not just public schools?
Uh, yes, that statistic that Dr. Hamburger is referring to is specifically the number of certified teachers that are coming out of colleges and universities in Pennsylvania, so any
Um colleges and universities in Pennsylvania, so any um private school or charter school entity that required teachers to be certified would be impacted by that.
So public schools do require certified teachers, but cyber charter, et cetera, don't necessarily?
Cyber cyber charters do because they're public schools, but um private schools may or may not depending on the the governance of the private school.
Thank you.
Like I would say too, I mean, in that information that Dr. Duraco provided, there was a a really interesting graphic. And it showed where Pennsylvania stood relative to all the other states in regard to its loss of of uh number of students that they no longer. Are, you know, uh processing through, you know, the state system for, you know, up for e- educating and and uh certifying these teachers. And and Pennsylvania was third from the bottom, you know, so it was it was pretty clear that Pennsylvania was probably in one of the most. Severe, you know, situations and of any any of the states in regard to what's happening right now with with the shortage of teachers. The the final thing I just want to report on is the fair funding lawsuit. Uh that just started just a few days ago. Um it's been in process for probably the the past, you know, six or seven years. Uh this is where rural school districts um and urban school districts are 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 contending that the the funding that they get. Providing education to students is not equitable. That when you compare the wealthy school districts in Pennsylvania to the to the rural school districts or urban school districts, that there's. That kids in these areas are not getting a fair shake. Um and that all students are entitled to high-quality um education programming. Um they believe that Pennsylvania as a state is underfunding education by three to four million dollars annually. So this is an interesting lawsuit. I think we should be following. I'll report on it at the next meeting as well, just to see, you know, how things are progressing. Uh but this could this could have a significant impact and if the the plaintiffs are successful, you know, in this case. So, Mrs. Stratton, that's all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hamburger. Uh next is the Township Row Liaison, which is Mr. Aaron's. He's not in attendance. Is there anyone that would have an update for us? Okay, then moving on, um next is again, public comment. Uh there were two names on the list, but I believe they spoke earlier. Um I don't believe they wanted to speak again, but is there anyone else? You did, okay, I apologize. Mr. Morgan.
Tim Morgan, forty-seven eighty Farmy Ridge Boulevard. I don't think Mrs. Breton's here today. Uh I just wanted to thank her. Parent Square has changed my life in twenty-four hours. If you're not, if you're listening and you're not on Parent Square, get on it. Um I'm gonna be a huge advocate advocate for this. Um with kids in multiple schools, in multiple clubs, in multiple sports. Everybody using whatever communication that they had available to them in one day, it's all in one portal. And um wow, it's just awesome. Uh and I know that there's more to come as we all learn this system. I don't know what her plans are. I do know that you have parent-teacher conferences coming up next week, especially I know how involved that is for for uh K to six. And, you know, I don't know if she's able to get Q R codes or have every teacher plug this at every conference, but um, you know. Between my wife and I, we noticed this year that sometimes emails would go to her, sometimes they would just go to me. And we're very good at double spearing from each side, and so it's easier to. All know that we're getting the information and I just want to say job well done because this is gonna be a huge, huge thing for. Parents to get information that we've been probably getting but missing in somewhere or another in spam folders or or somewhere else, so thank you very much. Well done.
Do we know at all how many um parents have signed up for it so far? I do not know that off the top of my head, but I'm sure Mrs. Breton could let us know.
Could I have you, I know we spoke earlier, but could you just put your name and address?
Um but it would have been nice if somebody at least said something in response to that. I mean, I'll kind of just sat here, you walked through it and that was it, it was done. We kind of figured what the outcome was gonna be, but we thought that maybe somebody has something to say. It feels like another way in which Exeter Township is disappointing us.
And I'd just like to say, I believe that I did make a comment earlier. Um I don't want to say that I was speaking for the whole board. Um. Definitely speaking for myself and from my heart, uh but just to kind of add to that, that um, you know. We do have a process that we have to follow and I didn't sit in on the interview, so it's tough for me to say who the right person is or isn't. Um I definitely respect the comment that the kids made here today. Um I appreciate that. And, you know, unfortunately, things don't always go our way in life, so my hope is that even though they didn't get the outcome that they wanted. I'm hoping that they learned a very valuable lesson today, that they were able to speak up for themselves, to speak respectfully. So I appreciate that. Okay, and I apologize if um or. Okay, I guess I'll leave it up to the board. Um usually, public comment, you have to sign up beforehand to speak, so I'll ask.
But we work away, we.
You signed up to speak prior to the meeting. This is a separate item on our agenda. Um we can discuss allowing you to, and I'm sure that the board will vote for that, but we need to go through a process and say yes or no. So if you can just give us one moment, please, I would I would love to listen to what you have to say, but we need to follow our process. So are there any board members that object to allowing more public comment from people that have not signed up on the list?
No objection.
Then we just, again, ask you uh reference your name and your address, please.
Uh Lori Schwank, forty-five ninety-four Durham Drive. I spoke earlier. And like I said earlier, when the board member came to our house knocking on the door, you know, about the Exeter Township Supervisor, which I work from home. I, you know, I didn't have to answer the door, but I gave you my time during my work. I'm a marketing manager. And I totally believe, number one, when I interview people for my department at work. I always look within before I look outside of the Exeter School District and John Forreys. Um opponent, from what I understand, is Matt Hadley, and that's who was given the position. He doesn't even work in the school district. Yeah, his parents may have, but he is not even, like I said, remotely close. To the amount of experience that John Forreys has. And like the board member said, you know, you guys vote. I asked if you vote and you said yes, and it's based, but you base it on what, who the athletic department recommends. So my question is, when did the vote go down and what was discussed? And if you did, I mean. I I'm sure you're all educated people, but I find it hard to believe if you had the credentials side by side, you would go with Matt Hadley. Uh there just has to be some kind of explanation here. My son is me, I don't even have a son. I have a daughter. And uh you know, it's just very heartbreaking that you guys picked, it it's definitely politics are involved here and it's very sad. And yes, you may say that these kids learned a lesson, not the best lesson, though. I mean, you obviously did not do your homework. And look at the credentials. Can I ask that question? Like, how did you come to this decision? I'd like to know that.
Dr. Heller, could you just explain the process um for any candidate that we interviewed? It doesn't have to be specific to this situation.
I can speak to the situation. Um I was not part of the interview process of the H R director, the H R supervisor is. Um there was a rubric that was used. Um it was standard questions that were used with the candidates. All the candidates who applied were interviewed and then based on the um responses, the interview. Uh the committee members made their determination.
And but what's it based on? I mean.
It it was based on the questions and there was a rubric.
And do you all review what the credentials were of?
They have, everyone had to submit um resumes and and that was reviewed by the committee.
School board members, because like I said, the school board member told me at my front door that you do vote on it, so obviously you have to know. Like, I want to hear what credentials you know, what both of these, you know, those final two candidates had. If you were able to make. A decision, you should at least know who's more qualified than the other. And if you did, like your, like I said earlier, your homework, you would know that John Forreys is much more well-qualified than Matt Hadley. And I do understand, I, it's my turn to talk, I do understand, and I'm not trying to be rude, but I think we we listen to you guys on my. Word tax thing, you know, uh township people just like you are, but my biggest beef with all this is. You know, if you guys voted on it, you shouldn't, I I just feel like. The the decision was made before you guys even voted. So what's the sense of having a school board when you guys don't even technically vote on it?
I'm not on the school board, I'm the H R director.
I'm gonna um thank you for your comments and just reiterate that I believe that my job as a school board member is to put people in place to make good decisions. So I trust in the committee that they made the best decisions decisions that they could. I didn't interview the candidates. I can't say who's better. I haven't seen either resume and I'm gonna assume that you haven't seen either resume as well. I don't know if that's pretty safe to assume.
And in all fairness, and I know my time is up, if you've seen the last name and you can't sit there and tell me it has nothing to do with it. Again, I don't even have a son, but it's definitely politics because the person that was chosen has the same last name as someone that coached for Exeter for years. And they're on a a planning committee for athletics about Exeter and can't sit there and tell me that politics did not play a role with it.
I can tell you it did not from my standpoint and I appreciate your um speaking tonight, so thank you. We're gonna move on. Um are there any board members that would like to be heard at this time?
Well, this is my last meeting. I appreciate all the time and energy that was spent. In my two years here. Um uh I'd like to congratulate Julia, Tim, Andrea and Jason. You got a tough task ahead of you guys. You're gonna not make it, I'm gonna give you a little bit of quick some quick advice. One, be smart, you know, in your in your decisions. Think about your community, number two, and number three, don't forget the kids. And just realize that sometimes when you see the loudest voices, that doesn't necessarily mean that they have the best. Decisions to be to be heard. And unfortunately, you know, we're in a situation where, you know, you're gonna get harassed. You're gonna get yelled at, you're gonna get screamed, you're gonna get all types of things and you're not gonna get paid for it. Um there's no, believe me, even though there's people on the internet that tells that we're getting paid some kind of way, there's no pay here. So um just understand that, you know, do this out of the kindness of your heart, understand what the ramifications of your decisions are. And just um, you know, do your best, you know. I trust that all you guys are gonna do a good job. All right? And I I appreciate the time that I was on the board and uh best of luck to you.
I just want to say that it was an honor working with you guys the last two years. And um I respect you all for all the decisions you've made and what you sacrificed. Especially with your family time at home. So um thank you again for serving.
Yes, I want to thank the board as well. Um one of my mentors once told me that it's good to challenge yourself and step out of your comfort zone. So when I applied for this position a couple of months ago, I not only stepped out of my comfort zone, but I think I walked like a hundred yards away because I would. Never put myself in a public situation like this. And I just want to thank the board for allowing me to um serve my uh uh school district and the community.
I I would also like to thank Michelle and congratulate you again on your election tonight, short-lived as it might be. Thank you very much. Uh Hury, thank you for your leadership and your commitment. Tony, I thank you for jumping in, um serving your ninety days. And um we're gonna let you go on parole. Knowing full well there's an election in twenty-three and that hopefully you might consider uh stepping in again at some point. But thank you very much for, all of you for your community service and Hunter as well.
I wanna, I kind of want to underscore what's been already said. I mean, I I think it's, you know, it's great that we've had. Uh the opportunity to work together. I think we've had, we've come to to know that this is a a good board. When you compare school boards and you see the kind of personalities that we have here and the way people treat each other with civility and respect. Um and and we see the folks who are leaving, who who contributed so much. You know, Tony, Hury, uh you know, Michelle and Hunter, all have 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 offered their unique perspectives. Honestly, sincerely, um and and we just thank you for it. We're gonna miss you. We've built friendships with you guys. Um and we hope that you stay part of the school system in some way. You know, even if it's not of as a board member, but you know, stay in touch with us and please help guide us, you know, through the next year and beyond. Um so thanks, thanks guys who are leaving. Um you're gonna be, you're gonna be missed for sure.
Here, here.
I'll just say too, cause I I thought you guys were coming back next month, just for a little bit, no, Hury? Um yeah. I just want to say thank you very much as well to all of you. Um I respect you all as school board members, but also um as human beings. And really um stepping up and always doing good things for our community, so thank you so much.
All right, here goes. I wrote a little something and I'm very emotional, so we'll see how this goes. Um I wrote being a school board director has been one of the greatest privileges of my life. Such a wimp, I'm sorry. Um it's honestly hard to talk this evening without getting emotional and those who know me are not surprised. My purpose when deciding to run was a simple, I love kids. I didn't have a hidden agenda. I wanted to be a part of the community I grew up in. I wanted to do good. I wanted to be a doer and not a complainer. I wanted to see the good that this district has to offer. As a community member with stakes still in this game, I promise to the remaining and incoming board members that I will continue to listen. I will continue to ask questions, but most importantly, I will continue to remember that we are all here for the kids. Differences only set us apart when we fail to find the common ground. To the new board, I urge you to make the reason for everything you do the students. You will be pulled in many different directions by many different people, but in my opinion, the number one person you need to please is the student. To the current and new board, next month I will still be on the sidelines throwing positivity and strength your way. I know how much is invested in this position physically and emotionally. That I look back now and I cannot believe that I had a baby while serving, followed by the chaos of COVID. But you got this. Just continue to remember what your purpose is. As a community member, I will continue to be thankful for the hard work by the Exeter teachers and staff and all that they do for our children. This may be the last time I get to thank you in such a public way, but please know that every day I appreciate you. I will continue to expect greatness of you and I know you will rise to that challenge every morning with a smile on your face. To the community, please continue to be involved and to be passionate. Please be respectful and understanding. Question, but don't judge. Together, we can achieve amazing things and build Exeter into the community we all want and desire. To Dr. Minor. I believe in your vision. I believe you want great, not good. I believe you have the best interests of our kids at heart. No doubt you will ruffle feathers along the way. But please always continue to do what is best for kids. Please listen to teachers and to the community. As a soon-to-be ex-board member, I want a leader who is unafraid to make bold moves, who is driven and who is child-centered. And you are all of these things and more. Finally, I want to thank my family. I've undoubtedly changed as a person in the last four years since holding this position. You have watched me struggle, you've watched me rejoice and you've seen my exhaustion. You have stood by my side reminding me that my heart has not changed. My passion for kids is unwavering. And that we all need a village to raise our kids. Thank you for allowing me to serve for the last four years on this board. Yes. If there's no objection, I will adjourn this meeting. I apologize, comment is over, but um some board members may stay after and I'm sure they wouldn't mind talking to you, if that's okay. I will need to adjourn the meeting first since we've already had public comment. Sorry. Uh no objections for board members, so hearing no objections, this meeting is adjourned.